Call to order.
We're going to do the swearing in for Elaine Pavo. Town Clerk Nancy Mello.
Come around.
As a school committee member, I would move you to the town of Tiberton.
Congratulations. So let's just do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. Like to entertain a motion to move back into open session.
Make that motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
An executive session. We discussed the appointment of the Assistant Middle School Principal and health and of the health and physical education middle school teacher. A vote was taken to grant 30 days to a middle school teacher. I'm going to ask for a motion to move up item 10, Spotlight on Success, Girls' Varsity Field Hockey Award and Girls' Varsity Soccer Award.
Second.
All those in favor? Dr. Sanquioni.
Dr. Locken, thank you. Members of the school committee, what is, what does the girls soccer team and field hockey team have in common other than being state champs?
Are you giving us a test?
I am.
They're fabulous ladies.
They're absolutely fabulous ladies.
That's right.
It's called overtime. If you're going to win a big game, let's do it in overtime, right? So let me call your attention to the Jumbotron. We have a video to highlight both teams right now. So at this time, I'd like to invite Head Coach Jim Gouch and Assistant Coach Kim Donovan from the girls championship soccer team to the podium.
All right. First, I want to say thank you for the, for you guys for inviting us to recognize the hard work that these girls did all year. And it showed, like they turned it into a state championship. They put in a lot of work in rain, cold, heat. We started the season in heat waves. We ended it in freezing. So they played hurt. They did tremendous job, right? You can't ask anything more from them. We ended the season 17-2, 11, 11 shutouts. We outscored our opponents 112 to 11. Mariah Ramos, our lead scorer, led the state in goals with 40 goals. Like we, like it was just incredible season. Like come in and we, we lose our first game, but we turned it around and we ended up finishing it the right way, so. Start with that. Do you want to say anything?
No.
So we're going to read the names. I'm going to try to do them seniors to freshmen. So we make it kind of go a little quicker, so. Our first, first one, our only senior, she's also our captain, Kayana Urego. Start over there and we'll go around that way, all right. Kayana also got academic all division for us, which means the senior has some 3.2 or higher GPA and so she got her academic all division, so. Hannah Marley. This is, she's our junior. Is Maisie here or not? All right, I didn't see Maisie, sorry. Maisie McQueen, another junior. Kaylee Nago, she would be our captain for next year. She's also first team all division. She got selected first team all division. Brenna Urego. Brenna got second team all division. Gillian Swass, another captain. She was also first team all division. So now we go on to the sophomores. We had a young team this year with only one senior, so we had a lot of juniors and sophomores. So we'll start with sophomore. Michaela Andrews. She had second team all division. Renee Barrett. Alex here or not? No Alex? I didn't see Alex, okay. Michaela Estavez. Mariah Ramos. She did get first team all division too. Sydney Sylvia. I believe Sydney had a sportsmanship award this year. Shayla Travers. Shayla got third team all division. Shauna Urego. Third team all division. And now on to the freshmen. We had a, quite a few freshmen this year. Like I said, we're young, so hopefully we'll be, we're going to stay good the rest of the next few years and keep back, come back here next year too, so. Avery Carval. Ashby Guerrero. Emma Lopes. Emma got second team all division two. Hannah Madiris. Kayla Mello. Kate Peterson. Taylor Pickering. And Kate Zimmick. And our assistant coach, Kim Donovan, too. I just want to have him introduce himself. That's all I got, all right? Thank you.
Well, congratulations. That was a fabulous job.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to invite our field hockey coaches, Head Coach Lauren Tavarez and Assistant Coach Christine Messenger to the podium.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? There we go. Hi. I'd like to say thanks for just taking some time out of your busy schedule to honor these two teams. Both these wins are immense and so well deserved. I'm proud of the soccer team and of course my team as well, but it's awesome to see them being recognized on a bigger scale than just the school. Our season was tough. Six of the 12 games were rescheduled due to weather, due to the bus strikes, just due to everything besides our control. I think our first game was actually on my birthday, September 13th, and then we didn't have a game for another three weeks. So we played three games in September and nine games in October, which was pretty stressful. I think everyone can agree to that. But we ended our season eight and four. We finished in third place even though we did have high hopes for that banner, but we fought back. We won our last game of the season in overtime against the first place team that knocked them down to second, and that's just what we took and ran with. We went into the playoffs. We won in overtime in our semifinals. We won in overtime in our finals. I don't know why overtime is our time. We have 60 minutes and they just wait till, you know, the 80 minute mark, but I'll take it. I'm so proud of this team. They've worked hard there. This is so well deserved and I'm proud of this program. I know we're going to do very well the next few years coming as well. Do you have anything you want to add?
No.
You're good?
No, I'm good.
So we're going to start with our seniors. The first senior is, we'll start with Amelia Peterson. She was on the all academic team. She was first team all division, all tournament, and the all tournament MVP. Our second senior is Ariana Helger. She was also first team all division and all academic team as well. Our third senior is Sasha Duggan. Again, first team all division and all academic. Oh, and all three of those are wonderful captains as well. Forgot about that part. We'll jump right into our juniors. We have 10 of them, so. Another captain of ours is Jill DeSilva. She was second team all division and a wonderful leader on the field. We have Margot Souza. Second team all division, all tournament team. We have Abby Poland. Lauren Bodren. Ava Erickson. Emily Caraveo. Who was named on the all tournament team for being a super awesome goalie. Asha Taber. Emma Franklin. Cherylin Defridas. Who was also named on our all tournament team. Is that all my juniors? There's too many of them, I could lost count. Okay, we'll jump into my sophomores. Emma Bodren. Lindsay Remals. Remals, sorry. Sam Maris. Angelina Santar. Who was named our, on our all honorable mention team and our all tournament team. Izzy Van Regenmorder. And then on to our freshmen. We have Grace Peckham. Ellie Flanagan. And last but not least, Abby Meekumber. Thank you again for your time, guys. We really appreciate this.
Great job, coaches, and great job, teams.
Yes, and none of the ladies tripped over any of the wires or tigers. We'll see how the football team does in a couple of weeks. Okay. So we're going to recess for five minutes until 7:30 and we'll return to open session. Return to open session now. So the next item on the agenda is open forum. And we, so Mrs. Chris would like to, Ms. Chris would like to make a statement in open forum? It's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening. You know, it's been an interesting two weeks. A lot of people seem to know what I'm thinking. A lot of people shitting me. I always tell my students not to shud themselves. It's not a good idea to shud other people. The last two weeks have been a back and forth of careful thought and arduous decision making. I consulted with people who know me well and also know more than I on policy, procedure, and the limitations of sitting on a political committee. I looked over the promise of politics as well as the pettiness. I can no longer watch grown adults create chaos without any regard to the chaos it was causing for students. I watched as grown adults forgot to be role models and instead instructed students to do their dirty work. I took into consideration what is best for the continuation of specific heart-centered work I do with students and families. I considered the many ways I've been able to use my voice to promote change. I also took into consideration who and what this town just elected to make decisions for the greater good of our schools and our community. I was made aware there will be attempts to silence my voice. I now know how far those who claim to be pro-school and pro-students will go if they do not get their way. Even going so far as to gather round and conspire to add a last-minute write-in candidate for school committee. I have taken the time to fully examine what accepting a seat on the school committee will mean in the overall greater good of this district. I now know what it will mean to sit on the committee and look over at those who willingly and purposefully contributed to the damage in our district. I choose to work with the better angels of change, not those who stew in bitterness and deceit. I took into consideration what is best for me and for my family. I am humbled, I am truly, truly humbled by the many friends and neighbors who voted in my favor. I thank you for believing and I thank you for voting. I would like to think this means I've been doing something righteous over the years. So please know I have renewed energy to put towards what my goal has always been, to see students thrive in an educational format and live in a community where people authentically care about one another. I have been privileged to do the work I do in arts advocacy and I've been honored to serve as the drama advisor for the past 10 years as students take the stage, use their own voice, create theater, and promote transformative change. I, along with others, are creating a social-emotional arts integrative frame to better serve students in the middle school. To date, no other district in the state is creating this kind of program. This work needs to continue. This is the core of how I best contribute to progressive change. I am not willing to trade these things or compromise the integrity of who I am nor the work. How dare anyone hint at jeopardizing any of this? The Tiberton School District is on a new path despite those who are fighting it. The destruction that was allowed to unfold at the middle school is being righted with new energy and guidelines, so this kind of oversight never happens again. Change at the high school is taking longer because the resistance is greater. While I am sympathetic to those who fear change, I can no longer allow their personal fear and anger to impede upgrades students in this district deserve. I see certain people now for who they are. I know now how carefully they crafted and calculated the work they do behind the scenes. I thought sitting on the school committee would make a difference. Now I'm not so sure. If these individuals were afraid of me sitting on the committee, they should be equally afraid of me not sitting on the committee. The toll misbehaving adults has taken on students is a disgrace, and I am hopeful this district is prepared to see it stop. My energy needs to remain seated and advocating for students and families, implementing ideas and using an arts template to assist in the healing and education of students who look to our schools as a safe place for learning, living, and loving. Finally, and most importantly, I consider the well-being of my daughter. After watching adults publicly attack a principal in an attempt to stall innovation and improvement, innovation and improvement won, I am certain I do not want my daughter to once again become an unintended target because a teacher or someone else in the district lacked the capacity to be a decent adult. By remaining on this side of the table, I will continue to use my voice to support our district, to support those within the district who are forward-thinking and authentically care about the growth and well-being of students. I can fuel hope. This district will thrive. Lead, follow, or get out of the way. Thank you. So moved.
All those in favor? Okay. Dr. Sanquioni. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. We did vote. We voted. We voted.
Yes, then I would love to introduce you.
He is appointed.
Then it would be my pleasure to introduce you, new middle school principal, Lauren Tavarez.
Is that news to you?
I'm sorry, I'm not quite the parliamentarian I once was.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and they're not here anymore, but I'd like to congratulate the school, the girls, their coaches, their principal. That's a pretty outstanding fall to have three championship teams in one sport season. And Chris Messenger was standing on that side with the girls soccer team when I was her opposing coach for Portsmouth girls soccer, so I was glad to see Chris is still involved in getting it done on the fields. I'm excited to be on board. I'll be here January 2nd when the doors open. I'm looking forward to working with the students, the families, and the faculty of Tiberton Middle School. And the principal, because I think she still has that title. All right? Thank you very much.
Sure. We can probably share the task. We had a couple meetings today. We had a small group meeting of members of the building committee that followed by a building committee meeting to update us on the construction. Let me start with the middle school, where construction is almost at substantial or complete. The good news at the middle school, there are no leaks in the roof. The heating system seems to be working exceptionally well. There's still some balancing that needs to be done, but overall, the middle school seems to be in great shape. A lot of the conversations today, they'll send it around the high school, where we've had continued leaks and we've had, where we're trying to balance the heat here, there's still a lot of work to be done to get that in the proper condition. We still have a couple rooms that do not have heat at this time, not rooms where teachers are in, so to say. It's a locker room and it's a downstairs office that we've been assured will be taken care of this weekend. Although I have to give, again, some credit to Alborg, our general contractor, they are very responsive. And every time we bring an issue to them, they're willing to take a look at it, figure out what the problem is, and figure out the solution. So at one point, we had many, many leaks here. They've been reduced down now to potentially not having any at all. We'll know for sure after the next rain fall, but again, they seem to respond pretty well. I'd ask you to add if I...
Do we have rain forecast in the next week?
I believe Sunday night.
We do. We have cold weather and we have rain, so it's going to be a bit of a stress test for the buildings. You know, I think some of the takeaway points are, again, this is a renovation, not a new construction, and in that setting, you have the end users in the building at the time that the things that would typically happen during new construction where you're sort of seeing how the roof stands up under, you know, you've built a roof, now you see how it stands up, and you sort of figure out where there may be issues. But there's nobody in the building trying to teach school, okay? You look quizzically at me or...
No.
Okay.
I'm actually thinking of a situation I had with my own roof.
I see.
Where it took me the better part of a year to get it under control.
Personal resonance that you couldn't believe how insightful I was being. Now I got it.
Yeah.
So that's one thing. Secondly is that the high school is a far more complex and at least 10-year older building than the middle school, so I think that's sort of driving some of this. As Dr. Sanquioni pointed out, Alborg has been very responsive and they're... and their feeling right now is that they're not expecting any kind of, well, they're not expecting any further leaks. Now, time will tell about that. The project has still not been turned over to the district. So, eventually, there is something called a commissioning agent who goes through and does all of the inspections, you know, sort of verifies that all the work has been done, all the work has been done properly, and that's when it's turned over to the school district. And again, the...
So, when do you, it has a target date?
I'm getting that. So, the, and the, the project is bonded and there are warranties. So, right now, while the schools remain heated, there is this issue of balancing the heat. So, sort of taking the system that has been built into a 60-year-old building, 50-year-old building, something like that, and sort of now fine-tuning it. So, that is ultimately the target date is mid-December. The final commissioning agent work is done sometime in late January. That doesn't mean that the schools are without heat. It just means that they are continuing to work with the system to make sure that everything is working as it should. And that's also when the roof, if you will, gets turned over to us, is probably mid-January as well. So, one, you know, and in some ways, the calendar is working in our favor in that we will probably see the worst weather we're gonna see this year, one would expect, sometime in that time period, or at least some of that worst weather. So, you know, in a way, if they had been working through, you know, I'm trying to find the silver lining here, I guess. So, if they'd been working through and finished everything, you know, on August 1st, we would have responsibility for everything, or we would, you know, have it turned over to us, and then the fall and the winter would come. So, you know, again, this is a bit of a stress test, what happens over the next several weeks. And it's supposed to go down into the 20s tomorrow, so we'll have some sense of where the heating is, or, sorry, Thursday. We'll have some sense of the heating is, where the heating is over the weekend as well. And then, there's supposed to be rain sometime next week to see if there are, as of yet, any other leaks. So, that was kind of the gist of the meetings today. Be happy, or Dr. Sanquioni, I'm sure will be happy, or Mrs. Black, if you have anything to add. She's been a diligent and faithful member of the school committee or the building committee.
Let's just emphasize that not all leaks come from the roof, as we learned today. So, how do you describe it without all of our professionals here? Sometimes, the ground in our basement area where our classrooms are, sometimes the ground is saturated and it actually is leaking through our foundation. So, that is at, that comes back to you guys, where that will be an issue for you guys, that we'll have to somehow water-seal the basement area, some of the classrooms. I saw them last night, where you can actually see where puddles were on the floor, and you can see residue of where water ran down the walls. We've also, I know one of the units did have a pipe that leaked, so it wasn't actually a roof leak. There was actually water in the building. And our windows leak. If it, we have a wind-driven rain, the water does actually come through some of the closed windows, which again, is a district issue and not a contractor issue.
So, yeah, you know, again, some of these issues are pre-existing ones in a, again, 60-year-old building, in this case, a 50-year-old building, in the case of the middle school. And we'll continue to have this as a recurring agenda item, maybe forever.
Kelly, I can understand the groundwater coming up. This year's, this fall's rain, in my mind, has been comparable to what it was in, I'm gonna say, 2005, 2006, where we've had a similar amount of rain over time, and the ground is just so...
Saturated.
I don't think this is probably something we could expect every year, unless we're, unless climate changes made us... But, we'll let that lie. The question I have, though, Dr. Sanquioni, is where are we with payment on all of this, and when are we due to submit our final request for payment from the town?
We've been, as you're aware, we've been making payments throughout the project, but the final payment is held until the warranties, until the building is commissioned over to us.
So, that would be in January at the earliest at this point?
At the earliest, sure.
The final payment is not made until the commissioning agent has said, "We're good to go." The building is formally turned back over to the district for, and then the warranties, you know, kick into effect. The other thing the committee has been looking at, but will need to be taken up by this body, is maintenance contracts, not just for the middle school and the high school, but for the three elementary schools as well. More to come on that. Don't even ask me the details.
And I'd add that both Principal Craven and Principal Ashley have been diligent with punch lists, and they've walked through the building extensively. We know everything that needs to be fixed by the contractors, and we're holding them to that.
Now, on the heat, I know we've had some struggles in the auditorium. Is that, at this point, under control?
That has been rectified.
Okay. And I would ask the principals, are there any specific concerns that you have going forward? I hear the middle school's in a little better shape.
Yeah, so, I agree with what all the comments that we've stated about the high school rebuilding project. It has been a little bit of a challenge the last few weeks with the weather, but to Dr. Sanquioni's point, I give really feeling updates to Alborg's construction. It has been responding to that. And then, working in concert with them together, developing these punch lists so that, A, it's a good thing in this case, and that B, we make sure that everybody, one by one, is checked through. We're really prioritizing every day. The auditorium is a good example. That jumps right to the top of the list. We see, make sure of that.
Are they, are they on site each day at this point still?
Still.
Alvaro?
Oh, yeah. Everything, everything that I've asked the committee to submit to me for regularity, because we've got to do the work that's been done and there's much that needs to be done. So, I check with them, ask them some questions, they respond, and then I can answer them if they're personally... And they've been very responsive.
I think we've heard that all along. It's never-ending, however.
No.
Or at least, it seems that way. Every time it rains, you have to...
But, we'd rather have it happen now while they're on site than...
Absolutely.
Three months from now. So, honestly, in the beginning, we were like, yay, it's raining, and now we're kind of like, oh, God, it's raining as a committee, but it's still good that they're here.
And, you know, they've been very good partners in this. And again, I will echo commending Mr. Ashley and Mrs. Craven about really being on top of everything for us. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask for a motion to table number, item 10A, approval of any A contract. We are still looking to form the fiscal impact statement properly.
And that will go out for three days?
Yep.
So moved.
To a second. Out of the favor.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to table items 10B through 10H, as we don't have our fifth member here this morning, and I don't think it's appropriate or fair for us to continue with any new business tonight.
I'll second the purposes of discussion. Any discussion?
I would ask for consideration for items G and H.
I don't object.
I'll make a motion to amend the motion to table items A through F, or sorry, B through F. To a second?
Second.
Out of the favor. So, my motion passes. Any other discussion on the original motion to table items B through F? All those in favor? Okay, we are up to item 10G, homeschool request.
So, we have a homeschool quest, request at the high school, Mr. Ashley? Anything you want to say?
I don't comment on it.
No.
No.
We just...
I have a motion to approve items G and H?
I'll make a motion to approve this homeschool request at the high school and the three for the middle school. Second?
All those in favor? And we are up to item 11A, November's student enrollment report.
That's just the monthly report that I'm gonna, I provide to you, and just has a comparison between October and November, and you can see that the district population increased by seven between October and November.
Dr. Larkin?
Yep.
Typically, anything that we have for discussion is gonna be under either old or new business, and I'm not quite sure if this reporting is properly placed here. Typically, announcements, scheduled meetings, and reports would be just for that. And the reports that we would include here normally would be, for example, Mrs. Black brought us some reports at the last meeting from an outside function. I would think that reports coming from in the district could either be considered with the consent agenda or under new business going forward.
Probably should be under new business going forward.
This way, we can have a discussion.
Yep.
Could we ask that this be tabled until our next meeting as well under new business?
Do you want to make that motion?
I would like to make that motion to table...
For you, any discussion? All right. I'm gonna ask for a motion for a German.
So moved.
I'll second, and all those in favor?
That's a wrap.